For Monday, October the 11th, 2021. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, united in its little liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Sue, roll call please.
Commissioner Ken Waldorf.
Here.
Commissioner Ellis.
Yeah.
Commissioner Gadula.
Here.
Commissioner Plank. Commissioner Schramman.
Here.
Commissioner Chambers is absent, and we have Mayor DeBoer as a special guest here with us tonight, and Chair Barker.
Here. Do I have a motion to excuse Marty Kevers?
I'll motion for that.
And support.
Okay.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
He stands excused. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I will.
And is there support?
I support.
And discussion? Sue, roll call please.
Commissioner Ken Waldorf.
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis.
Yep.
Commissioner Gadula.
Yes.
Commissioner Plank.
Yes.
Commissioner Schramman.
Yes.
And Chair Barker.
Yes. And do I have a motion for the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting from September 13th, 2021?
Motion for that.
And a second?
Second.
And discussion? Sue, roll call please.
Commissioner Ken Waldorf.
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis.
Yes.
Commissioner Gadula.
Yes.
Commissioner Plank.
Yes.
Commissioner Schramman.
Yes.
And Chair Barker.
Yes. Are there any public comments and/or communications concerning items that's not on the agenda? Seeing none, we will go to old business. Our first old business, A, is the 805 East Main Street, a statement of findings and conclusions. And with that, I will like to make a... I would like to make a motion to adopt the statement of findings and conclusions as prepared by the Secretary of the Planning Commission, in addition to the recent... or in addition to the record, the motion made in minutes from September 13th, 2021. Is there a second for that motion?
I'll support.
And is there discussion? Sue, roll call vote then, please.
Commissioner Ken Waldorf.
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis.
Yes.
Commissioner Gadula.
Yes.
Commissioner Plank.
Yes.
Commissioner Schramman.
Yes.
And Chair Barker.
Yes. Motion is accepted. New business, it's a public hearing on 2335 West Main, a special land use. It's a reapplication. And as I understand it, Andy Murray, our counselor from Williams &amp; Works, did not receive the site plan?
I received it this morning.
This morning. So he's had it, but limited. This is a redo or reapplication for what we approved back over a year ago. I think it was July of 2020, if I'm not mistaken. So I'm okay with going ahead with it. Commissioners, is there anybody that has a problem with that at this point?
Nothing's changed.
Nothing has, basically, nothing has changed. Okay? With that then, it is a public hearing, and I will open the public hearing at this point, but we will take comments after we go through A through F of site plan review, and then we'll take public comments at that point, and then we'll consider our discussions also at that point. So if we would have a representative from the 2335 address? Please state your name, address, all those good things, and in a few words, tell us what you want to hear.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for hearing this again. I hope that you guys have a good 18 months since the last time I saw you. Hopefully, this is the last time that we see you on this item. Andy, I apologize for kind of not getting that over to you right away. There was some conversation, and all that we're really changing on that site plan is we've been coordinating with engineering, and it appears that there... we thought that we were going to need to hook up water and sewer, which is an atrocious cost and requires us to go through the adjacent property. So fencing, landscaping, everything is saying the same on that plan. We're just coordinating with engineering and the Kent County Health... or Kent County as far as water and sewer. The other one additional change that we're doing is we had previously talked about demolishing the storage space on the west portion of the site. And instead of demolishing that, we'd like to maintain a majority of the building, demolish the west part of that building so that it meets the setback requirements. Right now, I'm not sure if you... this has been a while since you guys looked at that, but it appears that there's a couple inches that encroach onto the west adjacent property. So we just want to demolish part of that building, get it back into compliance, and save that building for potential storage and use within the facility. If you guys have any other questions for me, that's kind of everything. Everything else is the same.
Commissioners, any questions initially? Thank you, Andrea. If you would, then we'll turn it over to Andy, and Andy, will you bring us up to speed on the application of special land use?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this application is, as Andrea mentioned, this was approved by the Planning Commission in July of last year. I should look familiar to you, and the location should be familiar to you. So this is for a grow facility. It's on 341 acres. It's in the industrial zoning district, so we're on the north side of Main Street, a little bit east of Alden Nash. So the reason why they're back here is that in zoning, when something gets approved, when a site plan or special land use gets approved, they have a year to commence construction. And once construction has started, they have a year to kind of proceed on a fairly diligent basis towards completion of the project. In this case, due to, I'm not sure what the factors were, but they never started construction on the project within that one-year period. I didn't hear much about it for quite a long time, and then a couple months ago, I started having some discussion with the city about the sewer and subject issue on the property, and they were thinking about looking in a different direction. And so at that point is when we looked into it and decided that this needed to come back before the Planning Commission for re-review, basically. So if there had been any changes to the zoning ordinance as it relates to this property or the allocation, then obviously those changes would have to be... they have to comply with whatever ordinance is in place now, not what was in place a year and a half ago, but there haven't been any changes. So this one is pretty straightforward, and then we're pretty much just looking at, as Andrea said, except for the site plan, which, again, I haven't had a chance to do a detailed look at that, but everything else that we've received so far on the projects appears to be the exact same as it was a year and a half ago when the Planning Commission originally approved it. So with our... So we provided just a short, like, two-page staff report just to provide that background. Then along with that, we provided a copy of our report from last year, because, again, it seems like we're not going to rewrite the entire thing when it's... everything is the same. So you'll see included in your packets is a memo from July 8th of 2020. Again, that's from the original application. So it's okay with you, Mr. Chairman. We'll just kind of jump down to the site plan review standards as you update through F. We'll go through that as a group, I assume?
Yes.
Then we'll all go through them once? How you want to present it?
Yes.
So the first standard discusses the required use proposed on that adversely affecting public health, safety, or welfare. Uses in structures located on the site shall be planned to take into account topography, size of the property, et cetera. So in this case, it's been used for a bunch of different facilities historically. In this case, largest existing building would be used where there are marijuana establishments. They would then reduce the size of that non-conforming building, then retain the two smaller buildings on site. So because they're not really making any significant changes in terms of expanding buildings or encroaching further onto neighboring properties, and our relationship with the existing buildings and astronomy uses is likely to be the same, if not a little bit better, because they're bringing the site overall more into compliance than it was previously. Item B, safe, convenient, uncongested, and well-defined pedestrian circulation shall be provided for ingress and ingress points within the site. So they're not proposing to make any changes here. They had originally, I think, proposed to close the... one of the curb cuts on West Main. I think they ended up backing off of that. They this would require approval from MDOT to have those open, and even though they're existing with a change of use, they still want permits for those driveways. So if they haven't done that already, I think it would be required to get driveway permits from MDOT for both of the driveways if they want to keep them. It's possible that MDOT would tell them to close one, but typically, those situations would just defer to them in terms of what they want to do there. One of the comments we had in here is that, just some basic directional signage on the site or marking that might be beneficial to ensure orderly flow of traffic throughout the site. It's possible that one of those driveways might only be able to accommodate one-way traffic, so some clarification on the plan would be helpful there as well. We don't have any significant concerns in that respect. Item C, the arrangement of public or private, effective, effective connections to existing or planned streets in the area shall be planned to provide a safe and efficient circulation connection... or circulation system, excuse me, for traffic within the city. So this is similar to the previous one. I've had jurisdiction over the driveways. Pedestrian activity in this area is not high, and we don't anticipate the site to be one where there's a lot of pedestrians coming to and fro, yes, Mr. Chairman?
If I can take just one second. Andrea, is there... what is the resolution on the two cuts on Main Street? Are you still looking at keeping both of them at this point, or...
Yep. We went back and forth on the safety of that. Would you like me to come off?
Please.
We went back and forth on the safety of that, but decided because there is two adjacent buildings in the front of that, that if one of those is used in the future, that that would actually potentially make some traffic flow issues. So because there is two existing buildings apart on the south side of the parcel, we may at some point do a parcel split or something, and that driveway may be more appropriate for the existing building, and that was kind of why we backed off.
Okay. So that takes it off the table, is what I was trying to get at, I guess. Thank you.
And so... The Planning Commission is inclined to approve this tonight, as a condition of approval would include MDOT approving the driveway configuration as shown on the plan. Item D, removal or alteration of significant natural dangers will be restricted to those areas which are reasonably necessary to develop a site in accordance with the requirements of this ordinance. Planning Commission requires improvement in keeping buffers to be able to be continuously maintained to ensure that proposed uses will be adequately buffered from one another. Again, there are not many modifications proposed here. We have some landscaping... there is some landscaping proposed on the south side of the site adjacent to Main Street. There are some trees on the site as well. And then when it comes to the maintenance portion of it, that's always included, again, as a condition of approval. So if some of the shrubs die and one of the trees comes down for some reason, they'd have to plant a new one to replace it. Item E, satisfactory assurance shall be provided if the requirements of all other applicable ordinance codes and requirements of the city shall be met, which is always included as a condition of approval. And item F, really, consistency with the city's master plan and zoning ordinance and the purposes and spirit of both documents. So with respect to zoning, the purpose of the industrial district is to provide industrially related uses that serve employment needs of the city residents and protect residential areas from negative impacts often associated with them. This facility, according to the original application, will employ eighteen staff members after the first phase and eight more after the second phase, with a total of twenty-six. The industrial district would probably be the best location, in our view, for a growing and processing operation. However, the purpose also includes careful protection of residential areas within the city. There is some residential R3 behind the property, and so we discussed last time the fact that there's very shallow setback on that northern property line. I believe the Planning Commission required a fence along there last time. It looks like that's been constructed, according to...
No, it hasn't been constructed, but it is on the site plan, has been fully across the northern site now, which was not in the narrative to begin with here. So that was one of the things that we had...
Okay. Then as far as the master plan is concerned, this property is in the highway business fusioning schedule, where it's intended for uses that accommodate auto traffic, so retail, office service uses, things like that. It also is intended to correspond with regulations and land uses permitted in C-3. So the master plan generally envisions this kind of a, you know, auto-oriented, heavy commercial kind of area, and we think that this generally fits within that designation. So that concludes the site plan review standards, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions of either the applicant or Andy? Then I'll ask the general public. Are there anybody that wants to make a comment on the site plan review standards? Seeing none, then, I will make a motion that we approve or adopt the site plan review standards, A through F, with all the conditions that's slated. And is there a second?
I have a second.
And is there any discussion? Sue, voice vote, please.
Commissioner Ken Waldorf.
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis.
Yes.
Commissioner Gadula.
Yes.
Commissioner Plank.
Yes.
Commissioner Schramman.
Yes.
And Chair Barker.
Yes. Thank you. Next, we'll consider the special land use review standards, and again, the public review will be available at the end of... and again, I believe this...
A through F?
Yes.
A through F. So after each one of these series, we will ask for public review, just like we just did. Okay? Andy, special land use review standards?
So these are in section 17.03 of the zoning ordinance. So the last section related to the site plan, this is about the use itself. So the first standard is that the proposed use shall be designed, constructed, operated, and maintained, so as to be harmonious in appearance and... harmonious and appropriate in appearance with the existing or intended character of the general vicinity. It'll not change the essential character of the area in which it's proposed. Again, they're proposing a few modifications, and most of those are generally in a more conforming direction, so we don't believe that it'll change the essential character of the area in which it's located. That area is kind of a combination of industrial, commercial, residential, and institutional uses. You know, because it's kind of in the intersection of several different zoning districts in our original staff report, we had kind of highlighted that as an area of discussion to make sure the Planning Commission is comfortable with this kind of activity going on there. And so, you know, there's some R3, and then there's a public facility district.
Andy, down at the very bottom there, too, it says the proposed hours of operation, 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM. I know that's a city ordinance, but I just want to make sure that they are on the same page as the rest of them.
Yeah, so I don't know off the top of my head. I think that's generally consistent with what's...
Some are different, I think.
I think so, too. They would be required to comply with the hours that are prescribed in the city's licensing ordinance.
Okay. Okay.
Let's see, what was I here? There are some properties that west and the south that are planned or have been approved in this case for other marijuana retailers. And so, you know, our original staff report here was basically talking about what the Planning Commission considers to be the essential character of the area, and if this would have a significant impact on that. I don't think it does, but that's my opinion, and it's up to the other Planning Commission to come to your own conclusion as well. Item B, consistency with the master plan, that was discussed previously. The master plan had this as highway commercial, and it's kind of the intersection of several different districts, and in our opinion, this is a somewhat similar heavy commercial slash auto-oriented type of use, and we think that that's in general agreement with what's in the plan. Item C, the proposed special land use shall be adequately served by essential public facilities and services such as highway streets, police, fire, et cetera. So there's a little bit of a change here. So in our original staff report, we were under the impression that they would be connecting to both water and sewer. In this case, it looks like the updated site plan does show a water main coming from Main Street to service the building would connect to the easternmost building, if I'm looking at it correctly. And it's my understanding they would not be connecting to city sewer. In terms of other facilities, we talked about highways and streets already. You know, because there is... this is a Class C adult use marijuana grow facility, so there certainly could be some impact in terms of water consumption and power use, and certainly ventilation, lighting, exhaust fans, et cetera, are something that would have to be reviewed by appropriate city departments. It's our understanding they've coordinated low light power to make sure that those things are addressed. Similarly, you know, we know they've been talking to DPW with respect to the water connection, so I'm comfortable with those, with the Planning Commission finding that those are acceptable, you know, with the conditions that would go under approval that they be approved by other city departments as well, because it's really their area of expertise behind. Item D, the proposed special land use shall not create excessive additional requirements at public cost for public facilities and services. So the original site plan said that energy consumption would not result in, you know, overconsumption of low light power. And so, again, this is something that has a condition of approval that be dealt with. We don't have concerns with respect to other public costs, like police and fire, for example. And the applicants for these types of facilities are also required to pay an additional annual fee to help offset any public costs that are incurred as a result of the facility. Item B, the proposed special land use shall involve uses, activities, processes, materials, et cetera, that would be detrimental to persons' property or the general welfare. In this case, it would be located entirely within existing buildings, which would help mitigate those issues. You know, the only concern that we would have here on those items would be odors. The application indicates odors would be controlled through activated turbo filtering systems and interior pressure maintenance on building. Because it's a grow facility, they're not expecting, you know, it's not kind of like regular drive-in customer traffic like you would have for retailers, so the nature of the use would be a little bit different from some of the other facilities that have been approved in town. And then the last standard, F, is that it shall comply with all applicable federal, state, local requirements, and copies of all permits shall be submitted to the city. That would also be addressed as a condition of approval if the Planning Commission is inclined to approve it.
Thank you, Andy. Commissioners, any questions of Andy or the applicant? Or the special land use review standards?
The power consumption, low light power has deemed it the 2,000... was it 2,000 amp service?
Yes, we have been in coordination with low light power, and actually, it was your previous director that shifted off to the MCVA, that we have coordinated and made sure that we have all the transponders and everything that we need and are comfortable with that use.
Thanks. I just have one of... Andy, I guess, can we... Sewer is the one thing... you're using low water, correct? Sewer is the one that you are planning on not using at this point. Is there any reason... and I'm not advocating for it at this point, I'm just asking the question, I guess, is there any reason to require them to hook up to sewer? I know in other jurisdictions, if you are in the middle of a sewer line, you have to hook up. And I'm asking, just as a general question, I guess, as much as anything.
So a lot of the communities do have an ordinance that says if you're within, you know, 200 feet or something of a sewer main, then now shall connect. I'm not sure if the city has that type of policy in place. I, myself, obviously, I typically like to see facilities utilizing the services that are already there, because it obviously helps the city to have additional, you know, paying customers on the system, that's why it's there. But from a planning perspective, I guess I don't know how much it matters. The county are the ones who would be in charge of looking at it from an environmental and soil suitability type of perspective. So I guess I don't have a strong opinion on it. I'm not sure of the city's policy in terms of just requiring that connection, and if that's something that's necessary.
Commissioners, any other questions? If not, are there any questions from the general public? Seeing none, I will make a motion to accept the special land use review standards, A through F, with the conditions that we have understood, too. Is there a second?
I'll second.
And is there any discussion? Sue, voice vote, please.
Commissioner Ken Waldorf.
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis.
Yes.
Commissioner Gadula.
Yes.
Commissioner Plank. Commissioner Schramman.
Yes.
And Chair Barker.
Yes. Our next section then is the adult use marijuana establishment, special land use standards, and this goes B through...
M.
M?
Yeah.
M, B through M. So it's quite a long section, but we will, again, follow our rule of public hearing. Andy?
All right, thank you. So item B discusses separation distances. So as you recall, the ordinance does not allow for any kind of marijuana establishment within 1,000 feet of a preschool, childcare center, or public or private K-12 school, or can be within 500 feet of your C-2 district, which is your downtown central business district. It meets all of those standards. Item C deals with odors. We talked about that a little bit earlier, so this does meet the standards required in the zoning ordinance for having an activated carpet filtration system, maybe air pressure inside the building. Item D discusses... talks about any byproducts or ways to be properly allotted, kept, and disposed of, so as to create any risk to the public health, safety, or welfare. And the operation plan that comes along with this, the plan details the storage destruction disposal of marijuana products. If it's a recycled product, it would be removed from the inventory. Destruction and disposal of products would occur in accordance with the emergency rules that are adopted by the state and the act. The applicant has proposed a translucent container to allow visualization of the truck's effectiveness during destruction, and then they keep the records in the metric system, which is the state's monitoring system for marijuana. There is a dumpster, I saw, shown on the site plan on the west side of the property that would be surrounded by six-foot-high vinyl fence. That should be locked along... so the vinyl fence should be on three sides, should have a lock bolt here on the fourth side to prevent any potential entrance. Item E, this allows a building used for marijuana purposes that's also a residence, and that's not proposed here. Item F, any portion of the structure where energy usage and heat exceeds typical residential use, the sort of chemicals like pesticides, pesticides, et cetera, shall be subject to inspection approved by the fire department to ensure compliance. Storage of any potential hazardous materials shall be in a secure and locked area in compliance with state pesticide laws and regulations. So they have six curbs in Phase 1, which we've obviously talked about that if the energy usage there is going to exceed what a typical residential use would encounter there as a condition of approval, and as part of the city's internal process after the site plan is approved, is subject to review and approval by the fire department and other city agencies. Use of chemicals is proposed. It would be stored in accordance with the Michigan Administrative Code. Pledge of pesticides are proposed for storage in a supply block that has a commercial rating, non-residential lock on it. The chemicals is regulated by the state's marijuana emergency rules. And the operation plan also indicates it has to be wisely managed pursuant to the state's Natural Resources Environmental Protection Act. Item G prohibits one from operating business that sells marijuana in addition to alcohol and tobacco, which is not proposed here. H disallows drive-through, that's not proposed here. H disallows drive-through, that's not proposed here. I requires on-site compliance with the Michigan Taxation and Regulation of Marijuana Act, which would be addressed as a condition of approval. Item J enables the planning commission to require additional landscaping. So again, your review of the site plan, you know, make sure that you're comfortable with landscaping that is proposed there and, you know, understand that if you have concerns about that, then you can require additional landscaping or screening as you feel is appropriate. In the past, as you know, the planning commission has required additional fencing and stuff like that when there's been adjacent C2 residential areas, so just kind of keep that in mind. Item K requires the owner to keep clear and add the records and documentation demonstrating that the products have been obtained from and are provided to other permitted licensed operations. Again, and the narrative, they propose to use a statewide monitoring system called metric to record recall, waste, et cetera. Item L requires a general permitting, they'll apply with all the codes that would apply here, which may be addressed as a condition of approval. Item M just states that if there's any kind of conflict that the state act would preempt your zoning ordinance would also be addressed as a condition of approval. And that concludes the marijuana specific standards.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions on the adult use marijuana establishment special land use standards, A or B through M?
I have one.
Tony?
I don't know if you can answer this. Letter D, the waste removal and destruction of the waste. It says the dumpsters are not located, are indicated on the map. Is, now when you are, you're growing, the plants don't live forever. I mean, how are you to dispose of the, what is the cycle, I guess? I mean, it says clear package or a clear for visual effectiveness, but that's a lot of, 12,000 square feet, that's a lot of plants.
Now you're good. Now I wish that our actual grower was here, because it's a little bit, I'm gonna do the best. But most of the plant is usually, if you have some kind of mold, some kind of situation where product is compromised, you can't sell it, you gotta get rid of it. If you got a mold or something, or any kind of bug, you've gotta get rid of it right away. And when you look at the rules as far as grinding it up, it's more so because there was fear that like kids were gonna be jumping into fences and looking for weed in their dumpsters. The byproduct is not massive amounts. And most of the plant is actually reused, dried, and when it does dry out, so you go through, you harvest, you go and hang it up, you may be looking at a very large plant that by the time it dries out, it's, I'd say 20% the size. Then you're cutting all the buds off, and your locust stems, it's not a lot. But when we're looking at something that, we end up grinding that up so that there's no chance that anybody can get into that at all. It's not a massive amount of plant.
I guess that question was, do you recycle the plant matter, not the buds, but the plant matter? Or is the dumpster for the plant matter that is discarded?
I think there is a recycle process, I don't know. I don't know. I wish I could tell you. And if there's not dumpsters on there, we do have a location. Did you say that there's not dumpster locations on there?
That's what was indicated on the 2020.
So I have the site plan up on my computer here, there is a proposed company dumpster pad with a six-foot-high fence around it. It's shown on the westernish portion of the company.
And I guess Tony, part of your question here would be, is that adequate?
Yeah.
Right?
Huge, huge pole barn full of, but if it's dried, it's a lot easier to grind up than powder, and that's no contact. Well, if I recall correctly, the administrative rules require that you mix it with other, there's a list of things that you can mix it up with, so it's gotta be like 50%, you know, plant material, the other 50% is like coffee grounds and dirt and stuff, so you can't like. But that's just not nice buds, correct? You don't have to mix the plant remains with the coffee.
It may be the same. Now that he's saying that, in most cases, I've been looking at provisioning standards.
This gentleman here would like me to answer that question.
Yeah, if it's okay, if I could, we're, I'm checking for version design. We've done just over 30 of these marijuana grow facilities. Normally what happens at the end of the cycle, it goes to biomass, means it gets burned at a facility in somewhere by a licensed person that takes it, but it all goes by secure transport. So at the end of the day, whatever they have that's not being used, or that gets bugs in it, whatever it is, it gets bagged up essentially and a secure transfer company takes it. So it will not end up in the common trash with everything else.
That's where I was going.
Yep. It'll be separated and kept. Basically, the dumpster is there for employed lunches, really, you know, and a few other things, so it's not much that's gonna be used there, but no product goes into the trash.
If I could have your name too, for the record?
Yep, Cody Hume.
You can bill him something.
Thank you. I find it clear. Any other questions, commissioners? I have one on the, it would be J, landscape buffers. We do need to add that north fence is in there, the fencing on the north side.
Yep.
Vinyl fence. And then secondarily, because they are not doing the cut, does that change the, we're going to give additional landscaping along Main Street and things of that nature? How does that work?
So the ordinance doesn't change, so the landscaping requirements for, you know, for the frontage along Main Street, the requirements don't change just because you have secondary light. So the zoning requirement is one tree and three shrubs for each 30 lineal feet, I wanna say, but as you know, the planning commission has a fair amount of latitude here to, you know, allow something to make sense. The new site plan here, it shows a dozen, let's see, about a dozen or so boxwoods in the little island on Main Street between the two driveways. And it looks like there's some existing maple trees on the west side of the property. It's kind of a difficult situation for landscaping because it's, I mean, it's heavily developed and most of it's already, you know, paved over. And I certainly could, again, you could ask for more if you feel it's appropriate, but they have, you know, made some attempt to, you know, landscape the site and island in the middle where they can. If MDOT were to require them to close the driveway or something, then obviously, you know, you can require additional landscaping in that new area that would be created, but it's kind of a good planning commission.
Right. No, that answers my question. Any other questions, commissioners?
Mr. Chair, can I ask a question, please?
Sure.
Thank you. Andy, what is?
Nate.
Tom Fortune, you dig this, or any? What is the sewer plan for this site? Because I just went while you were going about that, looked up your sewer ordinance, but do we have any idea what the sewer situation is gonna be?
So I, like, my understanding is that they're connecting to a private subject system now, correct? That's about as much as I know.
And there's no city sewer that runs by that?
My understanding is there's a city sewer on, is it on a chasing property? I don't, this is, I don't know, this is all a little vague as far as that goes, so.
I mean, nothing you could do would excuse them from still complying with Chapter 25 of your sewer ordinance, so it wouldn't waive them to have to comply with it. It looks like, from my first review, that if there's a city sewer available, then they have to hook up to the city sewer. But if it's not available, then they can use other means, but it looks like it's kind of defining as being available right to the property. But, I was just curious what the plan was, and then we could look at what the requirements were.
If you don't mind. We're this property right here. And the sewer runs through here in an existing lot, and then it runs through this R3 lot. So it's not, I don't know what the definition of available would be. But in order to reach this existing sewer line, you have to put in a pump system and get an easement, which, you know, takes away the property, potential property, unit development for the R3 to the north. So it's available, but we would need easements from adjacent properties, and this one's not really possible because we have to demolish a building in this one over here where we built it. You have, you don't easement, that property aren't going to be available.
Is there, so there's no frontage of your property that fronts where the sewer line runs?
It is.
On Main Street there, I think.
No. Because the terrain of the sewer, we can't hook up here without, it's, you know, the way that it runs, it has to run down, so it's too high on the south part, and it actually runs across this property and then comes down way over here. I don't know exactly where it goes to the south, but it's not accessible.
Besides the elevation change, is it, does it front on the property?
No. This is where, this is the frontage of this property, and then the sewer line runs north-south on, you know, across the adjacent property to the west.
Okay, so even if you wanted to, to get to it, you'd have to get an easement to get out to it?
Correct.
Okay, so this site plan shows a proposed 20-foot easement for sanitary sewer, so, you know, it looks like there's a, it says place 348 feet of 60 sanitary sewer on it, so I guess I'm confused now because it looks like you are going to count.
Water, if it still says, is that a no?
This is the one from today on the picture, it has, and it has sewer, right, connecting around the north end of the site.
We're gonna have to send it in the back, yes. The one that's not.
This is, okay, this is what I got this morning. Is this one you got?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah.
Yeah. This is what I got.
Yeah, so that's, I mean.
Were those correct ones?
No. So this, so yours also show sanitary sewer on the north side of the property, connecting a 20-foot easement, connecting through to the north.
Again, an easement though.
Huh?
An easement.
Yeah, but it'd be, so the issue is that if this site plan is approved the way that it is, they're gonna have to do this. They're gonna have to put in the sewer and have easement next to it. And if there's, if the ordinance requires, again, I don't know what available means in that, but if it requires a connection, then they might have to affect it anyway, I don't know. Like I said, I'm a little late on the site plan, because I just got it. But if there's a different site plan that doesn't show this, that has a location of a subject tank and drain field, because that's fine, as long as we can resolve the issue with whether or not they're required to connect per the city's sewer ordinance. It's not really a zoning issue, but it's something that we should resolve, you know, before we get too far along with the approval.
Thank you for catching that.
I don't, sorry. I don't remember well, but I remember a year ago.
Nate, please.
Oh, Mike DeVor, sorry.
Thank you.
I thought that it was available by definition, but it was just an additional cost. I could be wrong. But that's what I thought you guys talked about a year ago. But I can get an answer on this for you tomorrow if you want to.
We had this discussion with staff a little while ago, and there's some questions about whether or not the planning commission required water and sewer, and it wasn't something that was specifically discussed, but in our staff report, it does say that they had proposed to connect the water and sewer, so at that point, we kind of deferred to the judgment of DPW as far as location and how that all, the mechanics of how that worked out. You know, the conservative planning commission is just as quick to connect, and it was, so we didn't, you know, spend too much time talking about it. In this case, because it's on the site plan that we have and that you all have, I'm thinking it might be a good idea for the city to postpone a decision on this right now and come back to it next month, because I don't want, one, I don't want the planning commission to approve something if you don't have the authority to do so, as Mr. Fortune mentioned. You know, if you don't, if they have to hook up, then I don't want the planning commission to, you know, take the position that would excuse them from that requirement, I guess, is my concern. And I know you probably don't want to wait another month on this, but I want to make sure the city gets it right.
It's gonna be here for a long time, so that was something you asked them to do this time.
And if there's an appeals process or something like that, then, you know, we can talk about that, but I'm not sure what's in there and how that would work.
Is the applicant confident that there wasn't no sanitary sewer, or do you think that perhaps, like, was this a remnant on an old drawing, do you think? Or are you, do you think your client may still want to do that option?
I'm positive that the client doesn't want water and sewer. I think it was an oversight by the.
Sewer?
Yes, yes. I'm confident that they do not want to hook up to sewer. I think it was an oversight, but I didn't check on that when I sent over the last plan from our architect and engineer. So it was definitely an oversight. It was not something that they want. So if you are, I totally understand tabling it, that makes sense, if you're, you know, amenable to approving with condition that we confirm necessity with engineering, and we still have to go through Penn County as well, because it is managed through Penn County. So if you're comfortable approving with that off of the site plan, obviously that'd be great for us. But I completely understand if you just table it and we get it right, it's a reasonable expectation.
Well, my thoughts are that we have proved the standards, basically, that the hangup right now is the adult use marijuana establishment special land use standards, B through M. And this would be a perfect time just to table it until we resolve the issue and find out exactly what has to happen. So I would make that motion at this point that we simply table it. We've got, we've got our votes on the other standards already in, so once we get that, then we can adjudicate this and go from there. And I think that's the better way of going. Commissioners, any thoughts on it? Then I'm gonna make a motion that we table the site plan review and until the November meeting for that reason. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
And any discussion? Sue, voice vote, please.
Commissioner Cadwalder.
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis.
Yes.
Commissioner Kaduwa.
Yes.
Commissioner Plank.
Yes.
Commissioner Schraven.
Yes.
Chair Barker.
Yes. And again, thank you, appreciate it, but obviously there's some confusion here all the way around, and rather than get it wrong for the next 50 years, let's get it right. Thank you.
See you then, next one, next one.
Thank you. Our next order of business is a new business, is a public hearing for 2384 West Main Special Land Use. And this also is a public hearing, which I will open. And is there a representative for the 2384 West Main Street Lowell? If you would, please give us your name, address, and in a few brief moments, tell us what you want to do.
Excellent. Thanks for having us. I'm Cody Hume with Dream Design. We are located at 117 West Michigan Avenue, downtown Battle Creek, Michigan. This project here is located at 2384 West Main Street. That's right up the road from here. It's an existing building and site as it stands. Currently, it is Galaxy Signs and Awards. It's a trophy and sign company there, it's a business use, it's being changed to a marijuana retailer, so this would be a provisioning center for the sale of marijuana. There'll be no growing of marijuana on this site or consumption of marijuana on this site. This is just for the sale. The building is to be monitored by a security system that'll be 24/7, 3/6.